Rosa, make sure to check the waiting room, the admits. Because my laptop is not allowed to admit anybody. Rosa, can you hear me?
Kyle, her computer's having problems with her laptop, so I grabbed your laptop off your table. And she said the mic isn't working on it, so she can see everything and hear everything, but she can't. The microphone doesn't work. She'll have to communicate through me, I guess.
And I think we're ready to go, Gordon.
Okay. Called to order the regular Rialto City Council meeting Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. In the absence of Mayor Garnes, your mayor pro temp will be running the meeting. So State Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Garnes.
Absent.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
City Manager Knop.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham. Community Development Director Caldwell.
Here.
Water Roadways Superintendent Jensen.
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And City Clerk Dunham is present. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. At this time, I will state to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A public presentation this time for persons who wish to address council on any matter not on the agenda of which council has jurisdiction. I'm going to abbreviate this. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. City Clerk or Rosa, are there any emails or hands raised?
There are currently no hands raised, no emails.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Item one, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of February 16th, 2021. Item two, approval of purchase of a painter street water storage tank solar stated equipment. And item three, receiving file 2021 fiscal year operating capital budget calendar. Is there any discussion or any council member want to pull any item?
I'd like to pull item three.
Pull item three, okay. Any other comments from the public?
No comments.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve items one and two of the consent calendar.
I still move, Woodall.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please. City Clerk.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one absent. Items removed from the consent calendar. Item three, receive and file operating capital budget calendar. Councilmember Wilson.
It's just a quick question on on the calendar. Is there a time that we will it says it doesn't really call it out that we're going to have a discussion as a council on the budget? Is that clarification on that, please?
So I don't know, Cheryl's on the line, but we have there's, there's two steps that at the very minimum involve the council. That's the presentation of the recommended budget and then the adoption of the final budget. And then we also have a period at the end of May for special budget meetings as, as necessary.
Just in the past, we generally had a discussion with the the council rather than just the presentation. So I was wondering if it's, it sounds different this year, is why I'm asking.
Yeah, there were two additional study sessions early on prior to the presentation of the recommended budget. Those have been done, I think, at least the last two fiscal years. And so those do not appear on this calendar. However, if there's need for special meetings, they would be at the end of May in that period that allows for it at or as the council calls for it. We also, and I don't think it's on the calendar, but there also needs to be a priority setting session for, for the next, for the next year fiscal year, which unfortunately the last year due to COVID was ended up being towards the end of the budget process, but with that, I don't know. Cheryl's on the line. Does any other additional information?
Can you hear me? I am here.
Yes.
Hear you.
So there, so there are, there's three meetings. There's the initial presentation of the budget where the council has an opportunity to look at it and, and provide input. Then it comes back as the recommended budget where there's opportunity to review those changes and then it comes back to be adopted. So it does come three times. I will admit, I forgot to bring my packet home, so I don't remember if the first one on the calendar says that it was on a council day or if it was early, but I think at this point, we might've had them all scheduled in regular council meetings, but they could come early. But there, I think we only used one study session last year and if after that first where the first proposed budget is presented to the council, if there needs to be more discussion, then there's, there's two extra weeks in May where we could have a discussion and I will make a note to add the priority session in the future calendars. Thank you.
Any further comment, Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve item three of the consent calendar.
Motion to adopt three, Woodall.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Could we have a roll call vote, please? City Clerk.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Yes, motion passes four zero. Item H, reports and staff communications, city managers, staff update. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. The update is on page 20 of your packet. As I pull up myself. So you may notice on the city's webpage, there is a new weather station app and, and thanks to Derek Taylor and the wastewater staff, they did install a new weather station down at the yard. So there is live and up to the minute weather information for Rialto. That also might interest Mayor Pro Tem Johnson also includes a rain gauge. So that information is now available on the front webpage. Excellent. We will also be doing a, on March 16th, at the council's next meeting, we will be doing the receiving an update on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and its applicability to the Giel River Valley Basin, which also includes Rialto. The also just another quick note, we did receive word from Caltrans this week that they do intend to be doing quite a bit of work on freeway maintenance between Stafford and Highway 36 this upcoming summer, including basically maintenance paving. And about six to eight weeks worth of various interruptions, nothing that would close all of the on ramps and off ramps to Rialto. We can expect that this summer, we're going to be seeing some additional traffic closures. We do appreciate that the communication is very good with Caltrans on regarding these type of projects. We do appreciate that. And then earlier today, Dan McCully, our sculpture artist, did install a buffalo sculpture that is on the pedestal between Creations and the Dollar General. So we're going to be doing a little press release tomorrow for that, but I think the buffalo looks good and we appreciate all of the work that Dan has been doing here in Rialto. With that, I will return it back to the Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Thank you, City Manager. Questions, Councilmember Carter?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Questions or comments, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, I had a question for Community Development Director on the I guess it's under his item for the review of the T-Mobile license agreement. Is, is that the same tower that we've had all along that we're, are we making it bigger or what are we doing with that?
Excuse me, Community Development Director Caldwell, it is the same tower. They added a generator and the fence around the generator is slightly outside their leased area. And that's why I was reviewing the lease.
Okay, so they're adding a generator for backup when there's.
Correct.
That's, that answered my question. Thank you. That's all my question.
Any questions or comments, Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, I was looking forward, one, for the wastewater treatment, they were, we were going to do a tour. And I'm looking forward to finding out when that is and when we'll be doing it. And I had a question for Community Development Director Caldwell, and I was just wondering how Element VII is coming along.
The Planning Commission approved the signed conditional lease permit at our last meeting. They are, or have ordered the sign. They have to paint the outside of the building and complete some landscaping. I haven't heard as far as a open door date yet, but I know they are working on things.
Okay, it's looking pretty good. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Thank you. And I have a, a question for Wastewater Superintendent Taylor. The meeting with Tesla, does this mean 100% that they're going forward with the energy saving battery pack?
I just had a conversation with our Tesla liaison today as I was heading out the door and he will be up here on Thursday at about 9:30 a.m. to do a site visit and kind of gather up the remainder of the technical information he's looking for. I would say with about 90% certainty that this project is moving forward. The rough timeline is that there will have the Tesla battery packs installed here within the next, I'd say, six months and then to just finalize all the permitting requirements through PG&E and to button up the project. So I, from my understanding, that the batteries themselves won't be totally operational and auto function until later on this year. So as far as I have, as far as I know, yes, these things are go. Depending on any type of extenuating circumstance.
Okay, thank you very much. Were there any hands raised or emails regarding staff reports?
No hands raised and no emails received.
Thank you very much. Next item. Item I, special presentation, study sessions. City Manager, I'd like you to give us an update on the various ad hoc committees that that we're going, water sewer rate studies and economic development and when those committees will be meeting again.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. So the ad hoc committee for the water and wastewater rate RFP just recently met and I'm going to try to pull up the date. Back on the 24th, so February 24th, we did meet. We are working on developing a draft RFP for review for the, for the ad hoc committee. So we expect to be able to do that sometime in March. And then, once the ad hoc committee finishes its review of the RFP, we would bring it back to the council for the council's approval to go ahead and start issuing that, that RFP. So so that is in progress. And then the economic development session. We are just today finishing up the document based on revisions and comments. We're going to submit it to the county for review and then we'll be scheduling another Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee meeting again sometime in March to go over that document in preparation for a council meeting, hopefully sometime in April or late March. So that's where we're at with those two ad hoc committees.
Thanks very much. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodall.
Oh, okay. What about the ad hoc committee that, for the school property?
So we have still not received correspondence back from the district, but at any time, if you want to contact me, we can schedule one for later this week. And then we also have a garbage bin ad hoc committee that we're also ready to go ahead and meet again to discuss the, the cans as well.
Gordon, would you be willing to meet later this week for the committee for the school grounds, for the school property?
Absolutely.
So maybe we can get that stuff.
Yeah, City Manager, go ahead and confirm a meeting time with the Councilmember Woodall and myself. And any other questions or comments? Moving on to special call items and community affairs. Approved calendar related to universal collection of garbage. Staff report, City Manager.
Councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, this is on page 26 of your agenda. And I'll go ahead and have Karen assemble the calendar to go ahead and kind of run over it. And, and actually if Rosa could enable the computer one to share, I can try to hear the calendar.
Give me just one moment, please. It should be ready to go.
All right, you're ready to go, Karen.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and members of the city council. As you are aware, there was a discussion at the last meeting on the city solid waste franchise agreement with Recology, Giel River, and the opportunity for mandatory universal collection. Linda Weiss from Recology, Giel River provided a presentation to the council on universal collection, including the process and timeline for potential implementation, a preliminary analysis of the rates and how AB 1383 relates to curbside collection. Staff agreed to return to the council this meeting with the more formal adoption of the calendar related to upcoming public meetings, ordinance adoption, franchise agreement negotiations and potential implementation of a universal collection program in the city. This also provides the opportunity for the council or members of the community to ask questions. And again, Linda Weiss is available to provide any additional updates and answer any questions you may have. With that, I'll turn it back to the council.
Thank you, City Clerk Dunham. Any questions or comments from council members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wilson.
So when we, we're going to do two public hearings, is that my understanding that to go over the ordinance is, I don't see it listed that way as a it's hard to read this. I can look at my own paper, but yeah, I mean, is this to work out, you know, like in the event that the, the ordinance moves forward, who pays for, I guess one of my big questions is who pays for the collection if a if everyone gets collection and then someone doesn't pay their collection, who gets the bill? Is that the kind of stuff that's going to be built into the ordinance?
Correct. So the, the ordinance, there would be two public hearings, one on June 1st and the other one on June 15th of this year. We don't have a draft ordinance at this point in time.
Okay. But we'll have, will, will we see something probably prior to that? Before we actually have the public hearing or will that will that be presented to council?
Well, I think we're going to go through the first two workshops on the 16th and April 20th to get information from the public and then and get questions answered and then draft basically the draft ordinance at the end of April and then May, so.
Okay, I see that's, that's a, there's a public workshop and then a public hearing.
Correct, yeah, yeah, there's there's in total four on this, according to this calendar, there's four meetings coming up that, that are that are important and that's 16th, the 20th, the 1st and the 15th, or excuse me, the 16th of March, the 20th of April and the 1st and 15th of June.
Is this a council meeting or is that a separate from the council meeting?
So like all ordinances, they have to go at a regularly sketch.
But I mean, those, those I guess I'm asking kind of a nitpicky question, but I'm this is workshop number two is 316, that's a, that's a regular meeting. So is that workshop part of the regular meeting or is it a, is something separate from the regular meeting?
Right now, I believe it's part of the, of the regular meetings.
All right.
So they, they could be special study sessions before the council meeting that we've, we've done those multiple times. Or they can be a part of the regular agenda.
Can I just add one thing? The reason we, there's a gap between the April 20th meeting, the workshop and the first meeting in June for the first public hearing of the ordinance is to allow staff the opportunity to get public notification out in plenty of time so people are aware of it.
And I, and I agree with that, that's I know there's a big portion of our city that, I think it was half of our city doesn't take collections. And is, since the last meeting, asking around, there's different comments, the biggest one being the expense. That that's why they, they just, it was easier for them to just haul it into recology themselves rather than pay the, the fee. And so I do believe this needs to go out somehow to our city, although I don't expect a big I mean, if there's five people show up, I'd be really overwhelmed and surprised. Because that's just kind of how things go with the public turnout. That's just kind of disappointing, but that's what it is.
Any other comments, Councilmember Wilson?
No, I think I'm good.
Councilmember Carter, any comments?
Thank you. I was just going to ask, what is the difference between a public workshop and a public hearing? And I guess maybe we've kind of touched on that already, but if there's anything more to add about what is the difference between those two things?
So the, the workshops are really just informational, you know, with exchanges of communication and comments and making sure that we're trying to be as informational as possible and then responding to the comments. When we get to the actual public hearings, that's a, that's a standard whenever we do an ordinance. It's always kind of a two-step process and those are called public hearings where the ordinance goes through a first and second reading. And so that's when you have kind of the architecture of what is going to be implemented down pat, whereas when we're talking at a workshop, we're, we're trying to get information from the public, we're trying to get information from the council to better inform how the ordinance is drafted.
I see. Thank you for the clarification. It's just a wording thing. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall, any comments?
Well, it's just basically the same. I had a citizen stop me today and had some questions about this. And now looking at this, I'll be able to direct them to the public workshops to get the answers he needs. So that's all I had. Everything else looks good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, I would make a suggestion that we add one more opportunity for public notification and that would be for our next regular scheduled meeting or our next, our public workshop number two where we do every door mailer. I know it costs us a bunch of bucks, but there's, there's huge potential for blowback from, from the community. And I I want to be able to honestly tell them that, you know, we, we invited you to four meetings to discuss this with us and, you know, you failed to come or you did come. So if the rest of the council agrees with that, I think we need to add that public notification.
I can compare with Pro Tem Mayor Johnson that we need to do a direct door mail thing to really give the because I do see blowback to that this will give people an opportunity to say, you had, you had, you had your opportunity to speak up. that this will give people an opportunity to say you had your, you had your, you had your opportunity to speak up.
Okay, I, I, yeah.
I agree also.
Okay, uh, Kyle, do we need a motion or is a consensus adequate?
Um, I think on this one, just a consensus is, is okay.
Okay, um, moving on, next item, discussion, placement of chamber-owned informational kiosks on city property. City Manager.
Okay, so uh I'm hoping that we have some representatives from the uh chamber on the line. Um, I'm gonna try to screen share again, and uh if you give me just a moment here to uh pull up the appropriate documents and arrange them.
Yes, this is Tracy O'Connell from the Chamber, and I'm on the line.
All right, thank you, Tracy, and I see Nick Angeloff is also on the line. So again, the Chamber approach uh staff regarding um, the permissions, this has been something that has been discussed in the past uh regarding the uh regarding these informational kiosks. And so uh the Chamber is, is here today to present to the council uh its, its proposals and uh what is up to the council ultimately is whether you want to uh allow these uh facilities to be placed on city property and then what locations. So um attached to your packet is a uh schematic of the uh informational kiosk, giving some dimensions. Um, and uh the composition of redwood and fir for the kiosks. Um, there's also a, a photo on page thirty-one or two photos on page thirty-one uh of the kiosks. I believe these are the kiosks um that would be installed. And then on the following page, it's just a description of uh the setting for the, the foundation of the of the kiosks, and then um, and then importantly, on page thirty-three uh is uh the proposed uh locations, uh which I believe the Chamber is open to uh changes in the locations um or any suggestions that the council has. Uh, but with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to uh either Tracy or Nick. I don't, there uh preference on which one uh goes first.
Well, we haven't prepped it, you know, uh Nick, did you wanna, you wanna lead off or where'd you wanna go?
Sure, can you guys hear me?
Yes. I mean, good.
Um, yeah, if I, I don't know if it's appropriate, I share my screen, but I've got a GIS up with these red dots on it. Um, the red dots are just put there to give you guys something to consider. Uh, basically, it doesn't matter where we put them. If you guys have strategic locations that are better than this, we're happy to put them there. Um, we've received a thousand dollar donation from US Bank to facilitate the equipment and materials necessary to place these. So there'll be a little uh donate, uh donation uh or made possible by US Bank Fortuna. Um, that's where we're, we're at with it right now.
And I just wanted to clarify, this is Tracy, that the, the contents of the, of the um kiosk would be different from, there's two sides to each, and they'd be different from one to another. And they would be of a historical nature, talking about the, the history of the area, the uh things that have gone on here before. So we, we have some pictures from the old photo guide and, and other sources and um and some copy of, you know, a few lines that, that would explain them. And the idea here is because this is extremely popular, if you look at the, you know, history, or do you remember when in Rio Del? Or do you remember when in Scotia? There's dozens of sites like that, and they get really, really popular with people looking at, at old things. And then also uh tourists coming to town, like with the statues and the flags and the other efforts to, to get people out of their cars and walking around and looking at things and saying, gee, isn't that interesting? To uh, you know, to learn something about the, about, about the area and um to uh, you know, park and and look at that and then maybe say, hey, let's go get some lunch and, and um things like that. So it's, it's uh two, two different audiences, the, the local people and, and also the tourists.
Yep. Thank you, Tracy. And the, we can shift out upon councils' request over the years or months. Which photos are in, if we put art in there, if we choose to do something different, it's not a problem. That's where we're at with it.
Thank you, Nick and Tracy. Uh, I guess the next step is for uh us to appoint a ad hoc committee for the work on this with the Chamber representatives. Do we have any volunteers from uh council members that would uh like to work with the Chamber on this?
I'll volunteer.
I would like.
Okay, we, we've got two ladies that are just hot to volunteer, so uh by the power vested in me, I'm gonna appoint you both to the ad hoc committee. Uh, and uh Karen or Rosa, was there any public comment on this item?
Uh, there was no hands raised beyond those of the people that spoke.
Okay.
No public, no public comment received, the email.
Okay, uh, any other comments from council members?
Yes, I have a comment. Um, I've seen these kiosks, and they are beautiful. I think it was the Conservation Corps that made them for the year or two ago, and they are really nice. And I think it's a, a great idea to have some of the historical pictures. I know whenever I find any of Rio Del, I'm, they just intrigue me to look at them and try to see what was what. And um, and like Nick said, at some point, we could possibly put art in them. That's what was one of the suggestions when it first came about. And I just think there's a lot of possibilities with them, and I think it's a great idea. That's it.
Thank you. Any other council member comments?
Uh, I just agree with the Councilmember Woodall and uh Councilmember Carter. I think they're both good of people for the ad hoc committee as well. So um, I'm all for it. Let's move ahead, please.
Yeah, and uh I myself think this a great idea, and thank you, Nick and Tracy, for uh spearheading it and bringing it to the council. Moving on to ordinances and special resolutions, uh second reading title only. Approved ordinance three eighty-three, twenty twenty-one, approving the pre-zoning of city's wastewater disposal parcel and intervening Caltrans property uh to public facility in anticipation of annexation. Uh, staff report?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, members of the council, this item starts on page thirty-four of your staff report. And uh Mayor Pro Tim Johnson pretty much summed it up in the description. This is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number three eighty-three dash twenty twenty-one, which would pre-zone the city's wastewater disposal field at the public, public facility, and it would be effective upon LAFCO's approval and the Board of Legalization's approval. As Mayor Pro Tim Johnson indicated, there are some intervening lands that are owned by Caltrans that would also be pre-zoned uh to public facility. I would uh recommend that your council deliberate, take some public comment, and then after that, adopt ordinance number three to three dash twenty twenty-one, which would again, pre-zone the city's wastewater disposal field uh to public facility once the annexation is approved. If there are any questions of the count or from the council, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kevin. At this time, we'll open the public hearing and receive public comment. Uh, City Clerk Dunham or Rosa, is any hands raised or any emails presented?
Currently, I see no hands raised.
And I see no public comment, the email.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, any comments from uh council members?
I, I think all my questions were answered already. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Carter, any comments?
Uh, no, no, I remember this from last time. We're good. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson, any comments?
Well, I think I'm good as well. We uh, like I said, we've been expecting it for a time. Glad to see it coming along.
Yes, I agree with all of those comments, and uh at this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval second reading of ordinance three eighty-three, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Woodall.
We have a motion and a second uh roll call vote, please. City Clerk.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes. And that brings us to council reports and communications. Uh, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Um, I attended the Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission meeting that was on February twenty-second. Um, it was, there wasn't a whole lot going on. We did see a program from um a state legislative group called the California Dream Index, and it was kinda cool. I'll share that really quickly. Uh, it's a website where um it by, breaks down by county, California's economic health. Um, of course, the Redwood Coast is kind of lagging behind the state, but um if you, if anybody wants to look at that, that is tracktherrecovery.org. Um, and one more time, tracktherrecovery.org, um and it's really user-friendly and worth checking out and looking at. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, I don't think I've been to any meetings since, I might've had a REDAC or, or not REDAC, but RCA. Yeah, there's nothing really, unless you wanna talk about biomass, but um it seems to be a topic that one more county, actually is a hot topic, but certainly with a, I believe, a small minority of the county. Anyway, that's uh, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Woodall?
Um, we had a nuisance abatement committee meeting. I guess it was right after our last um council meeting, and um it was good. We were following up on some of the abatement issues, and I also wanted to mention that there's an opening on the committee. And if you're interested, you can pick up an application at City Hall, and we would sure appreciate having some people, some more people interested in it. So that's it. Thank you.
Kyle, maybe we could uh put that on our informational sign in the median that uh we're seeking a public member of the nuisance committee, committee?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Gordon.
Yes, as far as meetings that I have attended or will attend, uh the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders uh group will be meeting via Zoom, of course, uh later this week. And the object of the meeting is to be setting criteria to try to eliminate various alternatives. And uh with Last Chance being closed uh approximately a week in, in the last month, I, I think there might be a, a little bit of uh impetus to uh take it serious. And uh, just for those that don't know, that uh there are, really, there are four groups of three other groups similar to the stakeholders group that I'm a member of, and uh one is the cultural group, which is the, the local tribes. Other is the regulatory group, that is the people uh that carry badges and guns. And uh third is the, the natural resources, and uh, you know, that can be the property owners and uh interested both in, in uh the mammals and fish and, and trees that are up there, so. Um, also, I attended a HCOG meeting and uh the, I think the most interesting and serious thing uh was that uh we approved pushing forward the uh city re-ricas' desire to uh have a, a two-way couplet as portions of Broadway. And as uh Mayor Seaman told me, uh she doesn't know if that's gonna happen in her lifetime. And since I'm considerably older than her, I don't, I, I know it's not gonna happen in my lifetime, so. Um, that said, uh, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can move.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a second, uh call and paper.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, thank you very much, and uh have a good evening.
Thank you.